I'd like to call this newly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission which has been duly posted to order. This time, I'd like to call upon Minister Gilmore to lead us in our indication.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We recognize that you are the source of all that is good and you are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for all the gifts of this life that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the freedom and opportunity to gather this day. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping to guide our work on behalf of our neighbors and our community. In your name we pray.
Amen. This time, I'd like to call upon Jordan Sartor, a Life Scout from Troop 222 sponsored by the Marine Military Academy. He is here working on his citizenship and the Community Merit Badge, which is a required merit badge for his Eagle Scout awards. Jordan, please.
Thank you, Mayor Muswell. Please join me in the pledge of our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody. Glad to have you here in our meeting today. Hopefully, you'll be here for the presentation on our comprehensive plan, which we had some festivities earlier in the afternoon, giving out prizes to those who won the rap for having filled out the survey and the questionnaire. This time, I'd like to begin with item one, which is the public announcement of events. Just will have Dave Ralph lead that for us.
Good evening. On the save of dates for our upcoming events, this Saturday, we'll have two very important events. We'll have the Spring Litter Bash that we meet at McKelby Park and so far, they've probably got over 400 volunteers by now since we got the slide made. The time will be from 9:30 to 11:30, and for details, folks can call Keep Harlingen Beautiful at the recycling center. Also, on Saturday, there'll be the Autism Awareness Day, which is sponsored by the Harlingen Police Department. It's free. It's open to the public from 9:00 a.m. till noon. They're going to have a lot of experts in the field of autism there and some various information booths. There'll also be some first responders, firefighters, police there. Families can get to know the first responders, sit in some fire vehicles, ambulances, and really get a close-up look at how they can interact with our public safety personnel. Also, on Saturday, April 12th, there'll be the Third Annual Kid Fit Festival Fun and Run hosted by the Junior League. That'll be at Long Sea Hill Fair Park from 8 to noon. Again, there'll be a lot of educational information, nutrition, exercise, everything to get a family going and in good shape. On Saturday, April 19th, there'll be the Spring Electronic Recycling Day. Personally, I'm going to bring my alarm clock. My folks gave me when I left for college. I hate that thing. For details, again, you can call the Keep Harlingen Beautiful at the recycling center to find out exactly what you can donate there in terms of electronics, but those are really bad polluters, so it's good to get rid of things there. And on Saturday, April 19th, Valley Praise will host the Egg Drop at the Sports Complex, Adult Softball Field, Wilson Road, from 11:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. And if you need further details about being a sponsor or the various activities, you can call the church for those details. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Next is the item two, is presentation of proclamations. And we have a record number, I think, tonight, of six. So, in the interest of time, I am going to read part of the proclamations, but not all of each one. All right. The first one we have is the year 2014, as the centennial of the founding of Lieutenant Thomas Barlow Chapter NSDAR. So, anyone from that chapter, Henshaw Roberts, Maggie Morris, Elaine, Marianne Olson, Edith Noble, June Chaney, Victoria Schwanda, come on up. Come on up here. I saw Sue Francis also taking pictures. Please come up here and present your proclamation. Okay. Here you go. Look that way. Whereas Lieutenant Thomas Barlow Chapter, National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, was founded in San Antonio, Texas, with the purpose of bringing the national goals of historic preservation, promotion of education, and patriotic endeavor to the people of our community. And whereas the area was an area of wilderness, filled with cactus, brush, and diske until irrigation canals were built, whereas the early days of the chapter were difficult ones, being the only chapter south of San Antonio, its members scattered, breached, and partially settled, no faves, highways, and impassable roads. And whereas the chapter mounted cannons at Palos Alto Fallow Field, in the size of the Thornton skirmish on Military Highway Road 281 and at Persaka de Palmas. Whereas the Lieutenant Thomas Barlow Chapter takes part in naturalization ceremonies, communicates with and sends packages, care packages, to Valley soldiers, and distributes U.S. flags. Now therefore, I Chris Boswell, mayor of the city of Harlingen, should hereby proclaim on behalf of the city of Harlingen, the year 2014, as the centennial of the founding of Lieutenant Thomas Barlow Chapter NSDAR, pray, for the next 100 years, we be as blessed and prosperous as the first. Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks for your support.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have the National Crime Victims Rights Week. I'd like to invite Beatrice Salazar, the program coordinator, Monica Lopez, Liliana Mendez, Michael Perez, anyone else who's here on that, just come on up. Hello. Whereas Americans are victims who mourn that 22 million crimes, even here, these crimes also affect family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And whereas crime can leave a lasting physical, emotional, and financial impact on people of all ages and abilities, and of all economic, correctional, and social backgrounds, whereas the crime victim fund today supports thousands of victim assistance programs who help provide support, help and support to child victims of violence and sexual abuse, stalking crimes, victims of homicide, victims of drunk driving crashes, and victims of domestic dating and sexual violence. The victim assistance community faces new challenges to reach and serve all victims, including victims of newly recognized crimes. National Crime Victims Week, April 6th through 12th, 2014, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy and creativity and commitment to launching the Victims' Rights Movement, inspiring its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas crime victims assistance through the district attorney's offices, joining courses with victim service providers and other concerned citizens throughout Cameron County, now therefore, being resolved, and I Chris Boswell, mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby declare the week of April 6th through 12th, 2014, as National Crime Victims Rights Weeks, and reaffirm this commitment to respect and enforce victims' needs during the National Crime Victims Rights Weeks throughout the year. I want to congratulate all you volunteers who work so hard to help crime victims and this is an enforcement of justice for all. So, thank you so much. All right. Thank you very much. Now, we have Children's Fitness and Health Day. And you're not staring at Trump. Kimberly. Kimberly. Whereas the Junior League of Harlingen is a member of the Association of Junior Leagues International, and the Association of Junior League International initiative to combat childhood obesity for our kids in the kitchen program, which is run for eight years. Whereas the Junior League of Harlingen's main mission is to provide the children of Harlingen an education outreach to healthy living through diet, safe living, exercise, and to educate parents and guardians on the importance of health. Through the collaboration of the Harlingen School District, the city of Harlingen Parks and Recreation Department, the city of Harlingen Police Department, many local businesses and nonprofits have demonstrated good civic duties and civic leadership and promotion, promoting this worldwide program of bringing the community together to provide these services. And therefore, I Chris Boswell, the mayor of the city of Harlingen, should hereby proclaim April 2nd, 2014, as Children's Fitness and Health Day in Harlingen, and call upon all citizens to recognize the importance of health. So, thank you for, thanks to the Junior League for all the great work you've done. Now, we have the National Service Recognition Day. Sylvia Yanis, the program of the lower Grand Valley Development Council Foster Grand Grand Program, and we also have foster grandparents Esperanza, Lani, and Martha Ramirez. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and essential to how we meet challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet the city's needs. Whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities through educating students for jobs in the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families. Whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organization they serve, both through direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. Whereas AmeriCorps members and SeniorCorps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in the future. And whereas the Corporation for National Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities. Therefore, being resolved, and I Chris Boswell, the mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim April 1st, 2014, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service on our city, and to thank those who serve and find ways to give back to our community. You know, we always say that we didn't, that we just wouldn't be the city that we are if it wasn't for the great volunteers that we have. And they do so much to make our lives better, our community, and this is a great example of that. Thank you for bringing recognition to all the volunteers who give service to our community.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next to last, we have the Fair Housing Month and Community Development Block Grant Week. And I'd like to present that to Tammy, our community, Tammy Began, our community development director of staff, and the Community Development Advisory Board. So, if you're on that board, come on up here. Whereas the week of April 21st, 2014, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Grant Program. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has set its primary objective to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunity. Whereas the city of Harlingen receives directed allocations of the Community Development Block Program annually. And whereas 39 years of community block grant program funding has developed a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, and businesses, now therefore, I Chris Boswell, the mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the week of April 21st, 2014, as Community Development Block Grant Week, in support of this valued program that has made a tremendous contribution to the viability of housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality for our community. I want to thank this board that does so much to administer these funds in a responsible and caring manner for our community. They really do so much to enhance the lives of so many of those, especially for the less fortunate in our community. And so, thank you again for all that you all do to make this program work. Congratulations.
Thank you. I wish you all a successful year.
One, two, three. It's there. Fair Housing Month. Last but not least, the Fair Housing Month. Whereas the National Fair Housing Act of 1968, the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibits discrimination in housing and declares the national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. Whereas the principle of fair housing is not only a natural law, but a national policy, but a fundamental human concept. Whereas fair housing means you may freely choose a place of residence in regard to your race, natural origin, religion, sex, family status, or handicap. Whereas the 39th anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law during the month of April provides opportunities for all Americans to recognize that complete success and the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. And therefore, I Chris Boswell, the mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Fair Housing Month, and do hereby urge all the citizens of this municipality to become aware and support the fair housing laws. And again, this board does a great deal to ensure that we try to meet that obligation in the city of Harlingen. So, thank you. Thank you, Spencer. Who wants to present this certificate? Who wants? Item three is the presentation of certificates of appreciation to recognize two TSTC students who assisted with the public input workshops for the comprehensive plan and handing out surveys. Is Jesse here? He wants to present this certificate. Who wants? Item three is the presentation of certificates of appreciation to recognize two TSTC students who assisted with the public input workshops for the comprehensive plan and handing out surveys. Is Jesse here? He wants to present this certificate. These go to Francisco Rodriguez, an engineering GIS student. Angleg Jimenez, an engineering GIS student. I want to say that one of the most fun public forums that we've had before that we did was the one that we had all of the, we had about 25 TSTC students there to talk about downtown core areas, and it was just a blast getting to have them interact with us, tell us where they think the future of Harlingen lies, and we appreciate so much your input and your thoughts on this stuff.
Mr. Boswell. Can we take pictures of this lady? Since there's a real hard work for this for the 140.
Thank you for all you did. Are there any conditions or directions to the minutes?
I just have a minor correction to page eight. We have, when it says a licensed security, it should be a licensed security guard, and I'll just give that to him.
Without a correction, is there a motion to approve?
Make a question.
Second.
All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Consent agenda, items five A through G, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, likes, aye. Motion carries. Item six, consider to take action to approve ordinance on first reading rezoning from not designated end district or general retail. District four, 0.15 acres out of block 11, 3.97 acres out of block 12, 5 acres out of block 13, and 1.64 acres out of block 14, store place subdivision survey 298, located on the south side of business 83 between Altus Palmas Road and Baker Potts Road, providing for publication and or dating other matters related to foregoing. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, likes, aye. Motion carries. Item seven, is the presentation by Jim Curio with half of associates regarding the city of Harlingen comprehensive plan. Jim?
Mayor Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and give you this snapshot of where we are with the comprehensive plan and get your feedback on making sure we're on the right track and direction. And after this, I welcome next week or so, any feedback or comments that you may have on where we are, and of course, then we'll work in the much more greater detail of the plan itself and the document that goes into that. One thing, as I start off, I want to mention is, as our committee worked together, one of the things they looked at is, what do we call this plan? And one name that kept coming up over and over again was our, "One Vision, One Harlingen", that we want to have one vision as we move forward. And I'm adding a little bit of amendment to that. Our vision, our Harlingen. As I said at the very beginning of this process, this is not our plan. It's the plan that represents all the input that we've received, everything that comes into it from you all and from your staff, that creates your plan, in essence, your, our plan for your citizens of Harlingen. I'll start off with a very brief, just snapshot of population. Of course, the growth of the city over the past couple of decades has been pretty good. As you move forward now, historically, we're looking at, this is a very conservative trend line. There are more aggressive trend lines that we'll include in the plan itself, but still almost doubling in size over the next 25, 25 to 30 years or so. So, growth, growth is going to come, whether it's on the outskirts of the city, hopefully some of it is in the inner parts of the city as well, but that growth is going to come. Now, this is also growth that's happening valleywide, and we know that both Cameron and Hidalgo County are growing significantly. We do want to make sure that Harlingen gets its share of that growth as that growth comes over the next couple of decades. As we went through this process, there was a lot of input, and I'm going to give you a very quick snapshot. It'll take me about 10 minutes to go through these, just a few key points on the surveys and things that we got. Got a lot of input from INTERCEPT surveys at many events, starting back in July, running into August of last year. And in our surveys, we had both an online and a mail-out survey that was part of this process as well. As we go into that, I'll show you some interesting differences in who answers those questions that I think is very telling, but it also helps us in terms of the feedback that we get. We also had four very interesting and well-attended workshops, as the mayor said, with the students that helped. In fact, it was interesting because at that meeting, those students were actually the facilitators and the leaders, so they were telling everybody else at the table, "This is what you need to do," and hopefully everyone listened, even us older folks. So, the INTERCEPT survey, series of surveys of different events, and we asked about top strengths of the city, weaknesses, the things that perhaps needed to be addressed. Lot of events came out, blues and hills, those kinds of things are really very popular, friendly, the size of the city, the fact that even though you're a city of almost 70,000, there's a sense of, there's a strong sense of a smaller community, a friendly community, a great place to raise a family. Lot of attention placed on the other side in terms of crime in certain areas, and the need for more business and continued business and growth, and restaurants and entertainment types of things. What ideas you have for improving Harlingen businesses, more family attractions, more cleanliness, recycling, a lot of things like that. The online and community input survey, the mail-out survey, I point you to this, your approximate age. So, it's very interesting. The online survey, you can see that the younger, 1935, are by far the greater percentage of those that answered the online survey. The mail-out survey, obviously, over 65, or 55 to 65, are the larger percentage. What this actually does is, and I'll show you a few slides, it gives us a chance to compare two very different age groups, two very important ones to the city, both younger, newer residents of the city perhaps, and older, more established residents of the city. And you'll see the differences in the responses in the second year. Of course, a lot of the respondents have vested interests in the city, they have lived here a long time, perhaps most of their lives. So, as we go through these, I'll show you the two, online and the mail-out survey. We tend to put the two together, but it's interesting to look at them a little bit differently just again, so you can see the younger versus the older respondents. And I think what you'll find is that, maybe not surprisingly, but surprisingly too, that there are very, very similar across the board in many of the responses. Very often, we don't find that. We find distinct differences. Satisfaction with the city, 60% in both cases, satisfied and very satisfied, roughly around 20%. So, very significant population, percentage of the population is satisfied of the way things are in general in the city. Has the community improved as a whole in the time you've lived here? Green has changed for the better, so more than half, half of the residents think it has changed for the better. Remained the same anywhere from 30% with the mail-out survey to 40% with the online survey. So, that's a little bit of a difference there with the younger respondents. We'd like to see that over time trend to where that blue area is a little bit smaller and the green area gets bigger. How satisfied or dissatisfied are you with any of the services listed before? And so, we've got a whole range of different things. The blue and the green represents very high levels of satisfaction, and as you get towards the top, the reds represent less satisfying. But you can see that almost everything there still ranges, at the lowest is about 40%. So, generally, pretty good satisfaction across the board. But the bottom ones are availability of medical facilities, fire, police protection ranked very highly in the city, garbage pickup, parks, people love, the residents love parks in Harlingen, the availability of higher educational opportunities. At the other end of the spectrum, things that... thousand, there's a sense of, there's a strong sense of a smaller community, a friendly community, a great place to raise a family. Lot of attention placed on the other side in terms of crime in certain areas, and the need for more business and continued business and growth, and restaurants and entertainment types of things. What ideas you have for improving Harlingen businesses, more family attractions, more cleanliness, recycling, a lot of things like that. The online and community input survey, the mail-out survey, I pointed to this, your approximate age, so it's very interesting. The online survey, you can see that the younger, nineteen thirty-five, are by far the greater percentage of those that answered the online survey. The mail-out survey, obviously over sixty-five, or fifty-five to sixty-five, are the larger percentage. What this actually does is, and I'll show you a few slides, it gives us a chance to compare two very different age groups, two very important ones to the city, both younger, newer residents of the city perhaps, and older, more established residents of the city, and you'll see the differences in the responses in the second year. Of course, a lot of the respondents have vested interests in the city, they have lived here a long time, perhaps most of their lives. So as we go through these, I'll show you the two, online and the mail-out survey. We tend to put the two together, but it's interesting to look at them a little bit differently, just again, so you can see the younger versus the older respondents, and I think what you'll find is that, maybe not surprisingly, but surprisingly too, that there are very, very similar across the board in many of the responses. Very often, we don't find that, we find distinct differences. Satisfaction with the city, sixty percent, in both cases, satisfied and very satisfied, roughly around twenty percent, so very significant population, percentage of the population is satisfied of the way things are in general in the city. Has the community improved as a whole in the time you've lived here? Green has changed for the better, so more than half, half of the residents think it has changed for the better. Remained the same, anywhere from thirty percent with the mail-out survey to forty percent with the online survey, so that's a little bit of a difference there with the younger respondents. We'd like to see that over time trend to where that blue area is a little bit smaller and the green area gets bigger. How satisfied or dissatisfied are you with any of the services listed before? And so we've got a whole range of different things, the blue and the green represents very high levels of satisfaction, and as you get towards the top, the reds represent less satisfied. But you can see that almost everything there still ranges, at the lowest is about forty percent, so generally, pretty good satisfaction across the board. But the bottom ones are availability of medical facilities, fire, police protection ranked very highly in the city, garbage pickup, parks, people love, the residents love parks in Harlingen, the availability of higher educational opportunities. At the other end of the spectrum, things that they'd like to see improved are job opportunities, the availability of quality retail, the appearance of things that they would like to see. And so this is the online, younger folks, and the older ones on the mail-out survey, very similar responses to economic opportunities, again, ranking very high at the top of things that they'd like to see improvements made in that, and that's no surprise, we know that in this day and age, especially in the past few years that we've come through, there's a lot of interest in terms of just economic opportunities and job opportunities. So the most important things to address, asking one single one, if you had to pick those, from the online, job opportunities, quality of retail, and appearance of the city, from the mail-out, job opportunities, quality of retail, better places to eat, and code enforcement, which to some degree is appearance as well. Vicability was the least for the older residents. For the younger residents, good range of restaurants, I think they're pretty happy with the restaurants that are here. Neighborhood issues, we asked about neighborhood components, and of course, satisfaction with our importance in safety in the neighborhoods, flooding, streets in poor condition, those are the most important ones from the online. From the mail-out, very similar, repairs, flooding, safety in the neighborhood. Related to the Jackson Street and La Placita districts, the downtown area, a whole bunch of different things that could be done, how important are these? Making the Jackson Street and La Placita districts feel safer, safer especially at night, adding more things to do in the evening, encouraging the renovation of buildings. And similar ones from the mail-out survey, very similar responses. Support for funding initiatives, so this gives you a sense of, these are the kinds of things that your residents are most passionate about, even to the point that if it had a slight cost associated with it, which is a real litmus test of whether someone's going to support it or not, that they would say that they'd be willing to support that. And what's interesting here is that almost everything in there has either blue or green that's higher than fifty percent, so there's support for almost every one of these things. It's just a matter of a little bit of a fine tuning at the top ones, which improvements of slow traffic might be some of the ones that are less, rank a little bit lower than others, but even so, they're still very, very well supported. But the main ones at the bottom, maintain the airport, as a strong regional airport, recruit new businesses, improve higher education, attract more diversity of retail and commercial services, improve the appearance of the city, recruit medical employment, address flooding and some of the infrastructure issues. So again, these give us kind of a snapshot of different things to pay attention to in the plan as we're developing the recommendations that come out of it. Very similar again for both, both surveys. One, a couple more things on the downtown area, just different things to do and specific actions to look at in the downtown area, so adding more interesting shops in the downtown area, more places to eat, more events, improving the appearance, and very similar in terms of the mail-out survey as well. So enough on the surveys, we had the four workshops, and just a very quick snapshot on those workshops and the different findings from those. First one was quality of life, and it dealt with parks and image of the city, city facilities, tourism, public safety. And the things that came out of there, of course, parks were very well supported, tourism, a lot of interest and surprise in many of the tourism things that are happening in the city. Things that need improvement, hotel infrastructure, physical appearance of the city as well. Parks, lots of green space and potential to connect trails, not enough trails was the other flip side of that, and I'll delve into parks a little bit later. Public workshop number two was quality of life and infrastructure, and surprising attendance at this one, because typically, infrastructure is something that to most residents isn't very high on the list of things they want to think about, but very good attendance too as well. And the traffic was pretty good in terms of the roadway system in the city, was very interesting to hear all the things that Water Works is doing and that the city public works department is doing in terms of all the different things they're doing with streets and water and wastewater and other things in the city. Third one dealt with, of course, as the mayor said, with the downtown area and the core area of the city. And one of the questions we asked, we asked everyone to do a mapping exercise in the groups, draw a line where you thought the downtown area was, and there was a wide range of different responses. We picked the ones that were very similar, and in fact, I think there were four additional ones, and most of those were generally fairly close to this one. And I think the point that came out of that was embracing the notion that the downtown has districts within, the Jackson Street district, La Placita, but it also is this greater downtown that's important to you as a city, and that you need to think of perhaps more cohesively in terms of all the areas around it, including, by the way, this building in Tyler Harrison. We also asked about vision and some ideas, a lot of great ideas that came out of that from the folks there. You know, there's a lot of good things that are happening in the downtown area already, especially in the Jackson Street district, with the mural programs and the streetscaping that's happened there, and I think there's a desire to spread that out and spread that throughout the remainder of the downtown area. And then the last workshop dealt with perhaps the most important topics of all, education and economic vitality. We had a great panel, including representatives from the EDC, the school, the school district, TSTC, the airport, and the medical, one of the hospitals. Great panel and very informative in terms of all the great ideas, such as the aerotropolis and all the wonderful things that are coming out of, coming out of those groups and the things that they're doing. And I think the one point that stood out to everyone is stressing how important these different groups are, and how important what they're doing is, irrespective of the things that came in the previous meetings, that perhaps most residents dealt with more on a day-to-day basis, but they clearly recognize the importance of all these different elements. So let me talk a little bit about some of the recommendations, and one of the things I want to stress is that at the end of the day, a comprehensive plan is an action plan. It's a set of actions and direction for you as a city. It may not delve into the finite detail of some of the things that come subsequent that build out of those actions, but it gives you direction in terms of where you go as a city over the next five, ten, fifteen years. And it needs to be flexible, because it needs to respond to this ever-changing world that we're in, but at the same time, it needs to give you clear direction, so you know, this is the path we're on, and not some change, complete change in direction. And if you do change, there is a reason that comes out of the plan that guides you to make that change. So some of the key areas we're looking at, and a lot of this came out of that input, transportation, of course, parks, downtown, core areas around the downtown, neighborhoods throughout the city, economic development, and then continuing to expand on partnerships as you move forward. And so I'm going to give you a snapshot of some of the action plans that we're developing, and some of these specific actions that go into that. There'll be others that we add to this, and we welcome your feedback and input, if there are any others that we need to add to this. I will say the transportation, of course, is building in the thoroughfare plan that you just completed last year, so it's fresh in everybody's mind, and it's a good game plan to move ahead with thoroughfares. So the one thing that we would mention on that is, looking at perhaps some alternative modes of transportation, some really innovative things that are coming out now that maybe deal with sidewalks or bicycling throughout the city, that other cities are beginning to really get into, and that you want to stay ahead of and keep competitive with them, because this is one of those things that helps attract younger residents to the city. So some of those actions might be, for example, as the aerotropolis and the industrial areas that the airport has begin to expand, making sure that connections to it are really good, strong, visible connections, both from Ed Carey as well as from 509, looking at some of the streets within the city itself and making sure that those connections work well. There's, of course, arterial roads necessary in the western part of the city, and then the idea of maybe some sort of trails and bicycle network that is for transportation, not for recreation, but it's for transportation and getting around the city. There's obviously a lot of interest in parks and trails, and I will start off by saying that for many cities in the area, you have an excellent park system, you have wonderful parks, you have large parks, you have a good amount of parks, and that gives you a great benefit that many other cities may not have right now, which is that you can focus now on the quality of those parks rather than the quantity of them, because you have these areas already designated, and you just need to look at what improvements do you need within those. One area that continues to stand out, of course, and it's a no-brainer to all of us, but it's the Arroyo. How do you continue to make the Arroyo as one of those true game changers that you have? How do you continue to make it that one thing that, as I was talking to someone, one of the realtors that was downstairs earlier, when they bring someone to town and they're showing them a house or just driving them around the city, they drive over on Commerce and they cross over the Arroyo and they turn their heads and do a double take and say, wow, I didn't know you had that. And right now, I'm not sure that that's there, where everybody just sort of, wow, you know, that's fantastic. So we want to continue to evolve the Arroyo until it becomes that. The soccer complex, of course, is a huge draw, significant interest in trails and connectivity, and then other things that you need, that you can focus on, high visibility parks to continue to enhance the visibility of the city. And of course, indoor recreation will be something that's of interest and will have to be addressed at some point in time. So this is what I was talking about with the Arroyo, in terms of just as you drive over it, you begin to see it, and even in the areas around Dixieland, where you drive over it on Dixieland now and you see it, and you can get some sense of the potential for that, and moving forward, we just don't want to alter it, we want it to continue to be this wonderful asset, and so what develops next to it is going to be really important, and that's one of the things we'll work towards in the comprehensive plan. So there's a whole series of recommendations on the parks that follow what I just talked about, including things like the soccer complex and the Arroyo. Downtown area, of course, was one of the core areas of the plan and one of the key areas of the meetings that we had with it. It was a great, attractive downtown area, within the districts themselves, a great framework of existing buildings, and really a lot of, as I like to say, very textbook, and that's in a very good sense that I'm saying that, approach to the issues. Things like the mural program that you have is one of the best in the entire state, so there's really good things that are happening within the downtown area. But there's more that needs to be done. Downtown is really still relatively small, needs that connection to Tyler Harrison, there's areas around it that it changes so quickly that you just wonder where you were. The one-way streets, many of the smaller one-way streets are confusing to some person like me who's not quite familiar with them, and think of all your visitors that come, and a street turns from two-way to one-way all of a sudden for no apparent reason. And so some of those things can be easily changed and can be worked on. The point that came out repeatedly was, we need to think of this as a bigger downtown area, not just the districts. Those districts are great, we want those to continue to thrive, we want it to be even better than they are, but look at the bigger picture around the downtown area. The blighted conditions of some properties near the downtown area in the core part of the city, you've heard a lot about that, I know you're very aggressively pursuing what you can do to do with that, but they continue to be an issue, and so that's one of the things where, that we're going to highlight that as an issue that needs to be, as I say, aggressively continued to be pursued. The connection of the La Placita area, there really is no reason now why the Jackson Street district and the Placita area, you could have that continuation of Jackson Street or the same sort of field that comes along Jackson Street into La Placita, and the area continues. And so one of the key things that I think all of these things point to is, the need to maybe create a more cohesive plan for the downtown area that focuses on it, focuses on this large area, that's a subset of the comprehensive plan that begins to look at all these very specific areas within the downtown area. And there are many recommendations on the downtown area, and probably still more to come in terms of some of the things that we can do within that area. Adjacent to the downtown area, and this is the larger, what I'd call the heart of Harlingen, coming in on Tyler and Harrison from both directions, these are gateways into the city. How do you transform these and turn these into something that, you know, in a continuous sense, from one end to the other end, you get this great sense that you're coming into this wonderful heart of the city? There's a lot of changes you go along, in some areas, there's a lot of sign clutter, and then it goes into other areas, for example, the part of Tyler near here, where you go to the east, and it's pretty nice, and there's some, you know, nicer buildings in that area that sort of transition. So how can we make it, all of it be more, a little bit more cohesive as we move along? And you know, one of the things you can do very easily is just a little bit of landscaping and a few things, and these are actually in the parking area, so they're not interfering with any of the power poles or things like that, but you will know that the, notice that mysteriously, all the wire connections for the power poles went away with this, so they are going underground in a conduit. But just small things like that, even if it's just in the core area near downtown, can begin to establish that link to the downtown area and make those two very key corridors highlight those. And so areas of Commerce, F Street, areas of Tyler Harrison, begin to approach some of these areas, maybe five or six blocks at a time, and look at what you can do to improve the appearance of those corridors. Within the neighborhoods, one of, there's a couple of things, one of these is, it's a neighborhood-by-neighborhood issue, bringing folks together from those neighborhoods to get together and apply some of their energies to specific properties, continue to have an aggressive program for the removal of dilapidated properties, these properties, and there are things we can do to help folks who cannot, because they don't have the resources or they're elderly and cannot work in those properties, but we need to make sure that we continue to approach those aggressively, because they do have an impact on everything else around them, they have an impact on the vitality of this core area of the city, and so it needs to be a very key step as you move forward. Wayfinding has been brought up, how do you bring people into the core part of the city? In some areas where you look at, perhaps there aren't many signs there right now, maybe you can do overlays within those areas where you begin to regulate the signs, just in those areas where they already have very few signs, and so you can begin to control it, so you don't get sort of a reversal where you have a lot of newer signs coming in, in the future in those areas where there aren't signs, and then helping, working with other folks to consolidate their signs. And I know that's a very sensitive topic, that's been brought before you many times, and it is an issue that affects small business owners significantly, but it is also an issue that significantly affects the appearance of the city. And when you're competing against all these other areas in the valley and the growth that's happening throughout the valley, you want to make sure that that's addressed. Neighborhoods and land, you use the same thing with neighborhoods, we want to make sure that neighborhoods continue to be stabilized and revitalized, and again, it's almost like it's a one-by-one, property owner by property owner, making sure that they work with their neighbors to begin to improve their properties. Let me just end up with economic vitality and closing a few points on that, several different areas here. The airport is a huge asset to you, I don't have to tell you how important the airport is to the economic growth as an engine for economic growth in this area. There is, as we know, as I showed you in those, that population growth in the next twenty to thirty years, there is enormous growth coming to this area, some of that growth may be to your cities to the west. They're going to continue to aggressively try to grow their airport facilities, and so everything needs to be done to continue to make sure that Valley International Airport remains a very strong, healthy airport, that the quality of the experience that you get there for anyone going in and out of it is, the international issue with making it an international airport is absolutely critical to the success of it. So we're pointing this out as it's going great now, but the future, you need to watch out for the future as it helps, because it's such an important part of the economy of Harlingen. Class A distribution space, manufacturing space, the EDC has been looking at ways to work with property owners to help encourage them to develop more of these, there's class C properties, but there's very little high-quality distribution manufacturing space in the area, so we want to make sure that that supply can increase. The medical sector, again, a no-brainer, you're moving ahead with that, but maybe perhaps looking at emphasizing the growth of areas in there, in the medical district in the city, so that you can bring all these disparate uses together, near the hospitals, and create a district where you attract different users to that area, and create an environment that they're going to want to come and invest in, because you want that private investment, create the environment and the basis for them around the hospitals and the medical school. Finally, we heard a lot from the school district and from TSTC, and they're entities that are successful and they're doing their best that they can. The point here is, you as a city can support them, and you need to give them as much support as you can for their mission, maybe it's just small things, like when they work, they're working on their campuses, working around the perimeter of their campuses, traffic issues, they may be very small things, they may be larger things if they come looking for partnerships with you in the future. We see them as being very critical to the success of the city, the ultimate success, and want to make sure that everybody's working and trying to make sure that they are successful as they move forward. The final thing I'll just close with is partnerships, ensuring that everybody's working together. I think, again, it was very eye-opening in that last meeting to see the different entities coming together and all the wonderful things they're working on, and how they're working with each other, and ensuring that those partnerships continue, and so it's everybody moving forward with this one vision for the city, this one plan that moves forward at the same time in the face of everybody else out there who is also moving forward with their plans or their goals, so that you get the good share of the growth that's going to come to this area. So with that, where we are now, we're, when we begin drafting the document itself, that'll come back to you- come back to you in a workshop. It'll come back to planning and zoning in a workshop. Plenty of opportunity for feedback. We welcome comments for a lot of the greater detail. But at this time, you know, we'd like any comments you have over the next week or so, any thoughts you have on the items that are in this presentation and the things that are in there. Tell us if we're missing anything, things we need to maybe address or fine-tune a little bit and make sure that we capture within this plan. It's a critical plan for you. It's something that your residents have invested a lot of their time in. You've invested a lot of time in it in attending many of the meetings, and we want to make sure that it reflects everything that you need to make Harlingen be a wonderful place, perhaps the best place to live, live and work in in the entire valley area. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions or, like I said, I welcome your feedback.
Jim, what's the timeframe on the workshop? When do you think we'll be ready for the workshop?
We want to have a draft document in place and make sure that goes through staff review. So I'm thinking about six weeks to maybe six to eight weeks, and then we can look at a workshop or... We want to do this before the summer kicks in in full, but we want to make sure that we get something to you all so you can look at to, with plenty of time.
Probably beginning of June now.
Probably so, yeah.
Could we get a copy of the slide deck? Because you went through it very quickly and there's a lot of...
Sorry, I did, yeah. Yes, and we'll make sure staff has...
If you can, I already got one. I said, "I want one."
No, there is a PDF that I'll make staff use. And actually, we've had some requests from residents, and so I think it's something that ought to be put up in your website the next few days and made available to get folks to look at. There's a lot we could cover. We could talk for two or three hours here. And again, just the responses that we got and the feedback at the various meetings was really great, and I thank you all for your support in terms of the staff and everything they put in and the effort you all put, especially your mayor, in terms of the effort you all put forward for those meetings.
What we wanted, we could do a preliminary workshop just based upon this document as well, if the commission wants to do that, or we can wait for the draft document. Because there probably is a lot to talk about, we should go through it in more detail. Of course, there'll be more opportunity, there'll be another opportunity for public input on everything.
Sure.
Okay. Can the commission have any other questions? All right, and thank you for the presentation. That's really interesting information, and I think we're off to a good start on a final document. Thank you to Jesse Robles and the entire committee who works at Harlingen. You're on the committee who stand up and be recognized. Thank you for getting us where we are to this point, and I know you guys have worked on it real hard. So, thank you. All right, thank Jim. Item 9 is to consider taking action to approve a resolution accepting Valley International Airport's amended mid-year budget for fiscal year 2013-14. Mike.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, City Secretary, thank you. During its March 17th, the Airport Board meeting, the board approved the mid-year budget amendments for fiscal year 2014. And you should have a copy of that budget in your packet, but I'll summarize the changes very quickly here. Total revenue budgeted for operating will decrease by $178,000, which will bring it to $6,261,500. On the expense side, total operating expenses will decrease by $56,832, which brings it That leaves us a net income decreasing by $121,168, which will leave us $501,175 in net income before depreciation. On the capital expense side, total budget capital expenses will increase by $239,000 to $1.262 million. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, sort of go over any of those projects with you. I also have Terry Chase here, our Finance Director, that is available for your questions as well.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the mid-year budget amendments to the Valley International Airport's budget?
So moved.
Any discussion? All of us, if ever, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, thank you, and then thank you to the Airport Board. Vicky Warren here from the Airport Board. Anybody else in the Airport Board here tonight? Thank you for your service to the Airport. Item 9 is to consider taking action to raise the Pan Am and building a tiny dollar golf course located across the street from the current clubhouse.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm here tonight. A few months ago, our Golf Advisory Board showed interest in, we have a building across the street from our pro shop. It's called the Pan American Building. It has been vacant for several years. Our board wanted to know what we were going to do with it. We brought in an architect to look at the building, John Piercy, John Piercy from Megamorphosis. He came out and gave us, I believe you've got it in your packet, the proposal, the report that he came out with. As you can see here, there's, this is the exterior problem, so you've got one wall that's separating here. The support for the roof on the trellis, the trellis is down here is all deteriorated from water exposure, more cracks in the wall. These are some of the interior pictures. The bottom two pictures are from the interior restroom where the floor is actually separating from the current wall. If you look in the top left corner, that is where the two, there's actually two buildings, one that was built in the late 30s, early 40s, which was the original pro shop back when the golf course was the Harlingen Country Club. And then another building that was built in the early 70s that they combined together. Now, what you see in the top left is the foundation of the original, where the two buildings meet has sunk. That is actually daylight that you can actually see out of the floor. The line that you see there is the wall that is facing the newer portion of the building, and you can see where the paint line was at one point, and that floor has sunk also, and that's part of the original building. This is the roof line where the two buildings meet. As you can see, there's a lot of water damage, and this is actually mold that has come in behind the walls at some point. In Mr. Piercy's report, renovation with a new roof, completely redoing the roof would run between $220,000 to as much as $394,000. A renovation with a roof repair would be between $200,000 and $347,000. To actually raise the Pan Am building, to demolish it, we'd be looking, with the help of staff, city staff, we could reduce the number down to $31,000 to $40,000. We do not have, we have been in contact with an organization that the city leased the building to from the early 70s up until 2008. We've had several meetings with them over since October. They feel the same way we do, that we don't have enough money in our reserves, and they don't have enough money to help contribute to renovate the building. And we, staff, along with the Pan Am Golf Association, also believe the best interest would be to actually demolish the building and look for options in the future to put something else in its place.
Is the building being used for anything right now?
No, sir.
After the raccoon and possum house?
No. Actually, that was an issue about a year ago. But no, we have not had anybody in it for almost three years now.
That building that, they actually paid so much money, what happened to that money? That will be still...
Excuse me, sir?
On that building, the insurance paid?
The insurance check was only for $4,800. During Dolly, the building was still in the Pan American's, the Pan American Golf Association's name. They had the insurance policy out on it. When we built our new pro shop in 2009, we actually moved back into the building, and the city didn't renew the contract with the Pan American Golf Association. A lot of that money went back into making the building and preparing the building for us to actually get into it. That money went into, the check that Commissioner Sanchez is talking about went into a revenue account, and then in turn was used for getting the building up to where we could use it. By that, I mean putting in the phone lines, the computer lines and things that we could run our POS and everything else out of.
And how much did that cost to the renovation?
The renovation with a new roof, a brand-new roof, that's one of the biggest issues with it. You're looking between $220,000 and $394,000 to redo a completely new roof. You're looking at close to, combined with both buildings, you're looking over 6,000 square feet.
And what do we recommend on that building?
Commissioner, I've been in that building several times, and the point and the condition that it is in right now, the best option is to ready it, demolish the building, and plan in the future for something to go on this spot. Plan for funding and financing to do something in this place. I think the best thing to do for us right now would be just to knock it down. Use city staff to do so, so that we can save some money.
Well, even in the, in that report that was committed where the architectural firm sort of took an engineering look at it?
Yeah.
Even those numbers that he presented based on what they stated in there, that's very conservative.
It is.
Because there's a lot of things that could, that are anticipated to come up.
You're absolutely right, once you dig into it.
That building, it's like you stated in your presentation, it's served the city and the Golf Association and Tony Butler really well for many, many years, but, I mean, I've seen that building. I see it quite often, and it's an unsafe structure right now, and it's pretty clearly supported by that report. And I think that, and your advisory committee, they...
Yes, they, our advisory board did vote unanimously to go ahead and move forward with this and ask for your recommendation.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the action to raise and demolish the Pan Am building?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Any other discussion? All of us, if ever, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Item 10 is, actually, is there any objection to taking the, these are all similar contracts with the different... Come on up, Paul. I want to, I'm going to take any stuff one at a time. I'm trying to take them all up at the same time, so that'll get everybody... Item 10, this will be item 10, consider taking, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, consider to take action to approve the renewal of the 2014 season of a contract between the city of Harlingen and, on 10, Gears from open Trillip Park Club for the use of the outdoor racetrack. 11, Arroyo Girls Fast Pitch for the use of softball complex at Arroyo Park. Well, renewal of the contract with Arroyo Soccer, use of Harlingen Soccer Complex. 13, Harlingen Baseball League for use of the baseball complex at Victor Park. And 14, American League for use of the baseball complex at Pendleton Park.
Mayor, I'll be brief. Again, there are league presidents here tonight, similar to what you reviewed a couple of weeks ago with those two contracts. Those have rolled into these with the exception of Gears. Gears uses the facility there on the north side of the oil mill pavilion, that racetrack that you see there. All of the other ones use our park facilities. And so the ones with the park facilities, we've rolled in the requirement that they drag and mark fields or paint those fields. Now, again, with soccer, baseball, those are different animals. One of them, you paint the fields, one of them, you chalk them, and so we're working with them. We have general agreements with them to kind of transition those over the course of the contract. So it's not like you approve the contract tonight, tomorrow they're marking the fields and they're off on their own. That's not the case at all. And we've negotiated a lot of these things with them. So staff recommends approval of all these. Parks Board recommends approval of all these. One of the things I'd like to say, I didn't get to the last time, was that over the last, the course of the last couple of years, we've put a lot on these leagues. We've asked a lot of them, and they've come through. And these guys are very passionate about what they do. Most of them are all volunteers. And when I mean by volunteers, all of their free time away from work goes into these leagues. And so when we call them to meet, sometimes it's very difficult, and so we schedule around them sometimes, sometimes in the evening, sometimes in the morning, but they do it. And I can tell how much passion that they have. In fact, some of these negotiations, there was a lot of passion. So I know how much passion that they have. But we got there, these guys are great. Between the taxpayers that own and operate these and maintain these facilities and these nonprofits that run the leagues, we're serving the needs of a lot of kids that otherwise wouldn't be able to do that. And so these guys are great.
And we have to acknowledge that they've been a lot of volunteer time to make these leagues work.
A lot, a lot, yes.
And so these are good citizens?
They're great.
They easily work with?
Very easy to work with, yes, they're great.
And I'm going to say, we've been at this for a little over a year now, this new concept with how we're doing it. So it's not a matter of did they comply or not. We've, because I've been here for a little over a year now, so...
Yeah, this, for these five, this is the first time they've actually, the requirements have been in the contracts, but we've gotten them to that point over the last year. So, yes.
Do you need a motion to have all five of those put together?
Is there a motion to accept the staff's recommendation to approve the various contracts on 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14?
I'll make the motion that we approve 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 together.
Second?
Yep. Is there a second?
Chief. No. Commissioner Sanchez, second.
Any other discussion? All of us, if ever, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed. All right, thank you. Item 15, board appointments, are there any board appointments? Okay, hearing now, we will go then to item 16 versus an executive session, a closed session on the following items, attorney consultation, pursuant to sections 1071, 531, 1074, Texas Government Code, personnel matters regarding cities and the Orion Studios, allegations regarding appointment of chief of police, and consultation with attorney regarding, under chapter 531, 1071, 2, regarding city commissioners' rights, his privileges, and applications connected with granted amount, SCP, to allow recycling center. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
All of us, if ever, say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, city commission's going to go into the back and consult with their lawyer on these two items, and then will be back and may take action. Thank you. We're out of executive session at 7:33, and now go on to item 17, consider to take action to confirm the city manager's appointment of the chief of police.
Mayor and city commissioners, I am recommending former chief of police Tom Whitten to, to the position of police chief. Mr. Whitten has an extensive background in criminal law enforcement, including stint with the possible police department. Based on his previous track record with the Harlingen, I would recommend Tom Whitten for that position.
At the...
At the salary that he had when he left the city of Harlingen.
And other benefits, the same, the same as what you...
Keeping everything the same, man.
Okay. I'd like to just, this is, this has been an interest to a lot of the community, and it's some newspaper articles written about his issue. And so I would like to kind of back over and remind everybody, you know, where we've come, how we got to where we are. About three years ago, I guess, two and a half to three years ago, we had vacancy as the police chief's position, and city manager asked the commission to appoint a citizens' advisory committee to help in the process of reviewing applicants. We conducted a nationwide search. Everyone was given an opportunity to make an application. Who wanted to make an application, there were, I don't know how many, but a lot of applicants. Those applicants were viewed by a citizens panel, many of them with law enforcement experience, including representatives of the... including representatives of the district attorney's office were on that panel and that committee. And out of all of the applicants that applied for the position, Chief Whitten was unanimously recommended to be the person to be appointed by the city manager. And so the commission at that time approved the city manager's appointment for Chief Whitten. While, since the chief came on board, he did implement a number of, I think, uh, while, I also wanna say that we had a, a great police department before he got here. We had a great, we had great leadership, we had good, uh, all of our police officers are committed for fine work they, they do. Tom did bring some new ideas with him, brought some, uh, new ideas in terms of dividing the city up into sectors for, with having this 24, 20, you know, 24/7 responsibility, a team responsibility. One shift didn't end when the next, the next shift took over. All the shifts communicated with one another to keep crime down in their, in their particular zone. So there was, there was never a handoff over the top, it was continued, continued work. Crime rate, while it had gone down in previous years, accelerated in its, in its reduction to 20% each of the last two years. Another one of the innovations that I think he brought was the Texas Police Chiefs Best Practices Standard Recognition, where the department went through a rigorous review, exhaustive review of best practices and those were supported and those were found to be in good working order and such that it, uh, recognition was granted by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. He's, when he left, before he left, he was working on trying to obtain the national recognition for that as well as working on another initiative that I think the commission was very excited about. And that was a safety city for kids to go into the oil mill pavilion behind the police department. In my view, what happened was Tom needed to take a leave of absence to address some family issues. He's done that, he would like to come back. We, he's a, he went through a process of selection two and a half years ago. We know he's a, got a proven track record with us. He's an outstanding law enforcement officer, is a master's in public administration or law enforcement. And I think that city manager recommendation is a good one. I would support that recommendation. Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
Mayor, can I say something just before we? I do wanna personally recognize Steve Mayer who's here tonight and all the police officers for, for serving as the interim police chief and for the job that you have done. We, we certainly thank you for everything you've done for the community and we certainly keep, we hope to keep working with you and, and to all the police officers for everything they do for our community as well.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment?
I'd make that motion.
Second?
Second now.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, let me just, just one comment here. You know, this, I know, for me personally, this has been a very gut-wrenching kind of a process because it did involve a department that I, that I served for 25 years. So a lot of the men and women that are affected by these decisions, I know them, I worked for them. I had the pleasure and honor of working with them. And, you know, the decision we're making tonight, I mean, we, we had a lot of discussion on this. I know I talked to myself a lot about this and tossed and turned and ultimately I wanna try to make, make sure that we make the best decision possible. And sometimes that's hard because it's not a clear cut, right or wrong, it's not a clear cut decision because there's so many different factors involved. The biggest burden I carry is that it affects people. It affects a lot of people that, that I care a lot about. So this, you know, it's, it's not, I, I don't see this as a win-win for anybody, but I think based on the information that we have, based on the process that has, that we've had up until this point, I really cannot argue against the decision and the consensus of the commission and the recommendation. And I cannot take away from the credentials of, of Tom Whitten. I wish we wouldn't have had this little, this little dust-up the way it happened. I mean, I can appreciate and understand the circumstances of life they happened and, and it is what it is. It wasn't fun for me, I know it wasn't fun for a lot of people to have to make these decisions. But I just want, I just wanted to say that because it's not something certainly that I see very lightly. I have a tremendous amount of respect for, like Carlos acknowledged, chief mayor and the other men and women that work for this organization. And I can only hope that from this day forward, however long, you know, the next chief serves, that, that our department would develop people from within. That, I remember when I took that, that oath of office myself, that was my desire. And I, I remember that clearly when I made that, I took that oath, I was hoping that that would be one of the last times that we have to look outside for a chief of police. So to me, that's one of the charges for me to, to, to Tom, if the vote goes this way, that, that he helped develop our people from within. I think we have those people already in place. So I just wanted to say that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? All right, that's again, a decision to rehire Chief Whitten. I also wanna express my appreciation to Chief Mayer, interim chief mayor. He's been a, a great asset to our police department. I go back and thank him for the great job he did under the leadership of another great chief that we have in the gang, eradication unit, and all the fine work that he did and getting that issue for us under control a number of years ago. And deserves a lot of recognition. And I hope we can put that, the team back together like we had before and we'll keep working. Again, thank you, Chief Mayer. 18, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading of their specific use permit to allow a recycling center of ferris metal and light industry, district located at 5001 East Harrison Avenue, currently with the chief from block, block 1, block 1, Funk Seed subdivision.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a recycling center of ferris material located at 5001 East Harrison Avenue. This is a subject property, as you can see here, the current zoning of the property is light, light industry. Subject property is approximately 53 acres of land. The proposed recycling business would generally encompass about 14 acres, which would generally be the southeastern 14 acres of this subject property. As you can see, there's existing buildings on the property. One of the buildings would be used for an office, which would be the northern building. The one on the southern edge would be for the housing of the metal materials. You see, there's also some property used in agriculture use. This is an early view of the property, you can see this whole acres is 53 acres and this is generally the section that would be used for the recycling business, which would be the southeastern 14 acres of the property. The remaining acres would be used in agricultural use as it is currently right now. One of the conditions, P&amp;Z commission, was that the applicant is gonna be required to submit a landscaping plan where he's gonna provide a five-foot landscaping buffer along, along the western perimeter as well as on the southern perimeter of the property, as well as provide a fence around the landscaping operations, which would be this section here. This is something that the applicant just submitted to staff today. This is a proposed fence he's proposing along the perimeter of the 14 acres of the property, the recycling property. It's gonna be a fence of a, a stucco fence and brick fence he's proposing. The P&amp;Z recommends that he has to have at least an eight-foot fence on this recycling operation. This is, you can see the property is also required to provide a landscaping buffer, submit a landscaping plan as mentioned. And this is just a proposed landscaping, he's supposed to, he's putting along the perimeter of the property. This is an early view, generally the, from the recycling operation to the edge of this property, the western perimeter is approximately about 500 feet from the, the edge of this property. The operations would generally be from Monday through Saturday from 8:00, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. Staff didn't receive any objection from the appropriate city departments, subject to the outcome of compliance with program city permits, as well as maintaining his proper TCEQ permits. He's also gonna have to submit a drainage plan, a stormwater plan in compliance with TCEQ. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z commission. The P&amp;Z commission is recommending approval subject to the applicant, providing and maintaining the required parking. He's gotta maintain his, his proper TCEQ permits. He's gonna have to submit a landscaping plan again, where he's gonna have to provide a five-foot landscaping buffer along the perimeter of the property, the, the western perimeter and the southern perimeter of the property. He also is gonna have to provide a fence around the land, the recycling operations, which would be this 14-acre section of the property. Any stacking of materials couldn't be higher than eight feet in height per the P&amp;Z recommendation. He's also gonna have to comply with all the requirements from the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions on the item and the applicant is also present for questions.
All right, we're going to have an A, it's a public hearing, all of the public hearings, you have a like special order against this specific use permit. Hearing now, close to public hearing, gonna have an B, which is to consider to take action to approve an adopted order on first reading of a specific use permit of the above described property.
I'd like a motion to approve this recycling center.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there a discussion?
Do you want me to read the caption, Mayor?
Yes.
Orders amended, voting ordinance number 07, district 07, city of Carleton, officials. Specific use permit to allow a recycling center of ferris metal and light industry zoning district located at 5001 East Harrison Avenue, bearing legal description of block, block 1, Funk Seed subdivision with the following conditions. One, providing and maintaining the required all-street parking and compliance with city regulations. Two, providing and maintaining an eight-foot solid fence, 97 acre, acres housing and facilities in all recyclables. Three, providing and maintaining a five-foot landscaping buffer along the property along, through the soccer complex and along Harrison Avenue, including two-inch cal, caliber trees and dense shrubs with appropriate irrigation to which a landscaping plan must be submitted for approval of the planning and zoning department. Four, only stacking recyclables within the seven-acre fenced area up to the height, the eight-foot height fence and no higher. Five, submitting detailed construction plans, drainage detention calculations, details for pavement design and a detailed site plan. Six, completing an asbestos survey before prior to any disturbance of existing building materials. Seven, providing an approved stormwater prevention plan, proof of a contract for the disposal of used oil and fuel and obtaining the proper TCEQ permits. Eight, obtaining the proper permits under chapter 122 through the chief of police. Nine, and compliance with the requirements administered by planning and zoning, building inspections, environmental health, fire provision, prevention, and police departments, providing for publication or ordaining other matters related to forecars.
Okay, we have a motion, they have a second, sort of discussion.
Well, no, I, I think some of the things that were, that were voiced, I mean, I'd like to, to have that out here in the public venue. So we can-
I was gonna say, we, we had some question about what qualifies for light industrial. And I think, based on that discussion, that Mr., I'm not sure who we're gonna direct this to. Who is Francisco? Your name is on everything, so I would like to ask you a question. Would it be too horrible? I, I know that we've tabled this once before.
Yes, sir.
And I understand that y'all have another operation similar to this in another city?
Uh, Houston, yes, sir.
In Houston.
Yes, sir.
So, so that the commission can get a better handle on exactly what the type of industry that you have? Because this is, this is a light industrial. Most of the buildings that are out there are doing work inside the building and you're gonna be doing work primarily outside of the building. And I don't know how that fits in with light industrial, heavy industrial, super-heavy industrial. And so I, I think to better understand what your business is, how it works, I wanted to know if we could at least ask for a two-week window where we can meet with you, possibly visit your location in Houston to understand how your business operates. Because I think the real concern that we have here is that you're gonna be doing some very heavy industrial with noxious fumes and, and, and things that aren't conducive to the neighborhood.
Yes, sir, I understand.
And, and I don't want to deny, right? But I'm not ready to accept you at this point, and this is, I'm speaking for me, not for everybody else. But I would like to know if you would be objection to allow us to at least the opportunity to table this? Because I would like to make that motion if Mr. Sanchez will allow me to. And be able, because I met with you all once on Monday.
Yes, sir.
But I don't think enough time is circulated. Because, you know, between now and then is two days. We haven't had a chance to really understand how your business is gonna work. I don't want to hurt your business and I don't want to hurt your opportunity.
I understand.
But I think it would be fair, I don't know, how do you feel about that?
Well, I'm, uh, agree with you, I mean, I could, I absolutely agree with you.
Anybody else have questions?
Well, I agree with Victor, I mean, I think we just need to know, have a better idea because we have some other uses in the area that are what I would consider to be more light industrial manufacturing, where you have a process that's conducted inside, that really doesn't have any noise or fumes or dust or anything like that. And the operation that you're contemplating is different than that and we just wanna maybe get more comfortable with exactly what it looks like and visit your Houston operation or send somebody to visit your Houston operation so that we know what we can expect.
I understand.
I, I'd like to, you know, also just sort of explain maybe a little bit of our perspective and that maybe your, your, your timing is just not as good as, as it could have been. We had a, you know, we've had a situation with, with another company that's in the neighborhood.
The tire plant down the street, I understand.
Right, and we've had a, you know, and that's not been a, you know, a positive experience from the, from the neighborhood standpoint. The neighbors have been very concerned about, you know, what's going on, on there and particularly those that use the soccer complex are concerned about that use, that use that's even a little further away, further away than, than you are. And so I, I'm, I'm concerned that we, that we be careful and very cautious about proceeding with this because we don't, I would be concerned that we'd have any sort of an activity that would be incompatible with this other activity, especially given, you know, what's happened here recently with another business in the vicinity and that we need to be careful about those, those things. So I think those are some of the concerns that are leading some of the commissioners, including me, to be, to want to know more, to be, and to be careful. Certainly we want to encourage business enterprise in our community, but we don't wanna, we just wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing for the rest of, for the rest of the community and the rest of the citizens.
I understand. I have some concerns as well involving the park that y'all have a lot of concern about. I recently learned that they incinerate animals across the street at y'all's, uh, facility. I'm concerned about my employees as well, you know, so I have concerns about a lot of things as well. So, I mean, I'm glad that y'all are gonna table that, I get a concern, I mean, there's some of my concerns as well.
Can we come in?
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Richard Garza, I'm operations officer for Unicell Metal Recycling. Do want to re, uh, I guess iterate the steps and initiation that Unicell Metal is gonna be taking to make sure that the concerns with the aspect of the park being next to it are addressed. The investment of a $250,000 brick wall to help conceal any issues or concerns in reference to that degree. There's gonna be, nothing's gonna be burnt, there will be some mild welding, the metal will be coming in. The demolition crews that throughout Texas will be breaking it down, bringing it in. And in reference to the site visit in Houston, each project is site-specific. The Houston project does not have access to the rail. The concept would be bringing in metals, crushing them, putting them on the rail, sending them- them to the barge, and then sending them to a transshipment location at the Port of Brownsville to be shipped across East to Bangladesh. So that's the whole concept of the project. Opening to the public, from what I understand, they do not anticipate opening and accepting metals from the public. It's going to be private metals collected within the company, the organization, once again crushed, not burnt. Rail cars will be utilized to ship to the barges, to the Port of Houston, I mean, the Port of Harlingen, excuse me. And then from there, we're going to tranship the barges to the Port of Brownsville, put them on vessels, and ship them to Bangladesh.
You get any, any part of that metal that can fly away and give some of the keys or things like that?
Oh, definitely not. Matter of fact, that was one of the reasons why when we strategized this, we kept all operations furthest apart, furthest away, excuse me, from, to the park. I think we have five hundred feet of farmland in between the buffer zone and the ten-foot wall. So the requirement's an eight-foot wall. We're even investing, go a little bit higher for beautification purposes. The whole concept's to create jobs and development within Harlingen. A facility and plant like this normally would be at the Port of Brownsville, just like the six of them or five of them that are located there. But Frank having family here, having interest in the community, wanted his business to be in Harlingen, Texas.
Will you be using, will you be using any industrial shredders?
Industrial shredders, yes, sir.
As, as well as, what sort do you do? Crush it?
Yes, definitely. You crush them for compacting and confining purposes. We crush metal to, so we can utilize space on the barges and the vessels as well.
And will you be using open gondolas on the rail?
Well, we hope yes. We definitely want. As a matter of fact, we don't have it on there. We're going to have to actually bring rail line into our yard and our facility, so we can be able to load the rail at that point. But that's something that's definitely needs to...
Will you be leasing, or do you, or will you own your own gondolas? I'm just curious.
That's to be determined right now, to be honest with you. The whole point of this project is to, for us to obtain this special use permit, it's very important for us to obtain this, or pass this part portion, for us to really go full force as far as what we're going to be using, how we're going to be using them, and so forth. We're very accommodating. We're willing to do what's necessary. We do understand the children, the concept of the park. These gentlemen here, matter of fact, when they came into town, they surpassed the opportunity of looking for tax abatement, understanding what the tax structure does for our community. They've also committed to help the community, cleanup projects, scholarships, anything that the city might feels that we can give back to. So, it's a motivated company, looking to create jobs. And due to the rail and to the Port of Harlingen, it allows us to select a site of touch.
Mayor, I think the way I see it, there's no way for us to be holding this recycle center. I think we'd say that we have to proceed with it. That's my point.
All right. Well, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
There's no more consideration.
There's no consideration to, to, you know, I asked Frank.
Well, there's a, I mean, I don't know, we have a motion and a second on the table. I don't know that a motion to, I don't think a motion to table trumps the motion and the second.
Unless they were to withdraw the motion.
They either have to withdraw the motion, and then you consent to withdraw all of the motion, and then a motion to table, and then we can, which means it doesn't get voted down tonight. The risk is, is if we, if I called a question, this could get voted down.
That's correct.
And would delay things even further. I guess they could, I don't know, they could reapply. I guess they could reapply.
I don't think they'd want to do that. I mean, I don't think we want to, we don't want to vote it down tonight.
I don't think they would want to, I don't think they would want to do that. Is the, who would like to see this table tonight?
I would.
I would like to, simply because of some of the questions that have been raised. I mean, I do appreciate what you explained, but...
No, no problem. If there's anything that we can...
That's very helpful. And I think during this process of, what would be accomplished during that tabling process would be just getting more verification of what you're talking about and in your explanation in that industry, so that we can make a more informed decision. That's, that's...
There'll be another meeting, there'll be another meeting in two weeks. And we could, we could put it on the meeting two weeks from tonight. But otherwise, the, so Commissioner, if you would care, if you would care to withdraw your motion, then a motion to table, and then we can revisit this in two weeks. If not, I don't know what will hap, I don't know what will happen. I don't know whether the...
And if there's any answers, anything that you have additional that you can ask or need to ask, that we might be able to respond to, that might be able to alleviate any concerns. As far as the material and dust, I mean, as far as the tractors out there farming, we have increased amount of dust. Metal dust throughout the air. I mean, any concerns you might have, please advise, and if there's anything that we can answer, and in turn, might, like I said, alleviate any concerns. But then again, we're here.
I think the questions that, I think the questions that we have probably are going to require our staff going out and meeting with you and getting some verification of some things for, I don't know, I think we would need some, you know, a little more extensive. I think what, what some of the folks up here are interested in are going to take a little bit more of these two questions tonight.
And I don't know, no problem in the direction, just so we can have a better understanding as a business and concerns on behalf of the commission, so we can start doing due diligence on our behalf, would be what exactly?
Well, I think if you could sort of, you know, just, if you can, if you can think in terms of the context, that, you know, this context of us having an issue, I know it's a different situation. It's not a noxious odor type thing, but it's still a, it's still, you know, will the activity of, you know, what, you know, how will the activity affect what goes on next, next door, and in what ways? And have we thought of all those ways? And have we thought of all those ways?
No, I totally agree, and I hope...
Because the public will be looking to us to say, why did you, why did you do that? You know, why didn't you allow that business to be there? You know, did you do your, did you do enough homework before you agreed to allow, allow the business there, especially in light of what, what's been going on, what happened just recently with another business in the vicinity? And so I think that's, there's a heightened sensitivity, at least for people, on this issue right now. And I think that's the desire on the part of some of us to, just to be sure that we're, you know, this is, that everything you're telling us is absolutely correct, and that there's no chance that, you know, there's going to be any activity that will adversely affect kids playing on the soccer complex.
No, I totally agree, and I hope that the noncompliance of a business in our community, in a highly regulated industry, does not affect whether it be us or any future business in the area. Because we do not operate that way, and not every business operates that way. They, they chose to operate that way, and, and that's, you know, a comment that I do want to, I hope the commission sticks with is, not as bad stigma, and reflects on individuals that want to grow our regional economy.
We appreciate that.
No problem.
I want to ask you a question. Do you, you don't mind to hold on for two weeks more, or?
No, we're here to be as cooperative as possible, and to do what we feel is in best interest of the half of the city, create jobs and, and build our economy. So if it takes waiting two weeks at the request of the commission, we'd be more than glad to do so.
Okay. So they're okay with it, Commissioner?
All right.
So you withdraw your motion?
Yeah. I'll throw the motion, and then make the motion. I'll withdraw my second.
He's taking the motion.
I'm making a motion to make a decision in two weeks, and I hope the other commissioners...
Okay, we have a motion to table.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Out of nineteen, citizen communication.
Raymond Reyes.
Don't fall down.
My name is Raymond Reyes. I live at seven oh six, nine ticket drive, business owner here in Oregon. Basically, like, for instance, with what just happened with this business, I think that as a business owner, maybe, you know, everybody should be a little bit more prepared. I'm sure they submitted everything they needed to submit. They did say that it was their operation in Houston was different, it was a specific use up there. Another thing that I wanted to, to voice out is I think their last meeting there was talked about management and comparison to corporate America and things of that nature. In reference to the city manager, if, I think the city manager should manage the city. He needs to look at everything, look at all the departments, see everybody's on the ball, doing, doing what they need to do. I had an incident that I had been trying to take care of since October, October of last year, that held up me doing something I wanted my businesses. I got very frustrated. It took three phone calls to take care of it myself, with cooperation of other departments, because everybody was passing it off to everybody else. In corporate America, that really doesn't work, especially if you want to be efficient. I believe in being efficient for my businesses. That's what I do for kind of a lot of living. For other businesses, to make sure things are in check, make sure things go smoothly. It actually saves a lot of time and a lot of dollars. We pay the city manager, I don't know exactly how much, but I'm sure a very good salary, because most city managers get paid very well. And we shouldn't inhibit his ability to do his job, if that's what happens, because he's hired for a purpose. Don't get caught up in political stuff that's going to be around us all the time. If you want to compare the city commission to corporate America, corporate America wants to be efficient. They want to get things done. They want to make positive things happen, especially in a city environment. I've always stated that Harlingen was way ahead of the game when my family decided to move here. Now we're, it seems like we're trying to catch up, and we're stumbling over each other to do that. Now we're apparently, we've hired an outside firm to give us direction or consulting on things that's basically common knowledge of what needs to be done. So, in my opinion, we should stop fumbling around with it and just move forward and get it done. The downtown district is still, in my opinion, in shambles. For many years, the businesses that my father owned paid these taxes that, you know, I haven't seen nothing come out of it. And then when one of the commissioners put me on the board, everything was redistricted so I could be off the board, which I found very interesting. But nonetheless, Harlingen's a good place to live, and we can do a lot of good things. So, you know, let's just keep moving forward and avoid all the nonsense, basically.
All right. Thank you.
Raymond.
I'm tired.
Practice my theme.
I'm tired.
Call me the dog. Jose Rodriguez Jr. for the record, twenty oh nine, I send the road. Kind of took a look today at the Facebook postings on the Horns and BD website. Apparently, my commentary worked, because some of the personal postings are gone of Mr. Mayor. And then, but today, you know, I took another look at it, and I saw dogs, chickens, and cartoons. I said, what kind of, you know, what kind of Facebook are we showing to the other police departments, to the general public, that that's what we want to set as a professional Facebook for the police department? I don't know. I'm trying to figure that one out, especially the dogs and the chickens. Anyway, Monsieur, and I talked to you last week. I sent, I sent your letter. I didn't talk to you, I actually sent your letter about time theft. I don't think you're ever going to get back to me. I don't think you're going to, I don't think you can give me that respect, but it's occurring, you know? It is a big problem, because this time theft that I talk about is a very important issue. And if we're all to understand what time theft is about, time theft, time theft is when you have an employee that's supposed to work eight hours in a day, and he takes half an hour for lunch, okay? Those are the patrol officers, the detectives, nonessential personnel. You know, what they're doing right now is they put them on a straight hour shift also. Now, Monsieur, then I'll make you a deal, okay? This is what I want you to do. I want you to go and tell Mr. Mayor and Sergeant, and Chief Witten, that I want all the people to, to go, to check out for lunch at the, you know, with the, with a phone or et cetera. And that way we can prove how much time they're actually taking for this time theft, because if we're going to find out that I'm right, you know, they're ripping off the community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Williams? All right. That concludes our meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody. Good night.